Bells will be ringing. The sad, sad news. Oh, what a Christmas. To hell the blues. My baby's gone.
Are we ready to go to work?
No, I didn't know, so.
Okay, so then, and then you press record once, okay? And then it will start.
We're gonna call the meeting to order. First, we're gonna have a work study, and then after that, the regular meeting. Roll call, Fatima, you're up.
Vice Mayor Laurel D. Nein?
Here.
Councilmember Rick Anderson?
He'll be, he's not here yet, he'll be.
Councilmember Marty Grossman?
Here.
Councilmember Mary Mallory?
She is here.
Councilmember Jody Rooney?
Here.
Councilmember Michael Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Harvey Scoob?
Present.
We have a corner mayor.
Okay, next item, introduction of legislators. Vice Mayor, you wanna start?
I would be honored, especially since we have a wonderful new title for our very special Karen Fan. Doesn't president sound good to you? And we have Representative Noel Campbell and Representative Dave Stringer, and we thank them for being here tonight.
Welcome. Appreciate your making it here. And let's start with you, Mr. Stringer, you wanna introduce yourself a little bit?
Well, sure, my name is, uh, my name is David Stringer.
Test one.
All right, does this work?
Yes.
So, David Stringer, Representative David Stringer, I am an incumbent, just finishing up my freshman year, and I'll be going into my second term, January the, uh, January the 14th. Many of you, I actually see some familiar faces here, some of you may remember me knocking on your door. I was out here, and I did a lot of heavy canvassing out here in Prescott Valley. We did about 2,500 homes here in Prescott Valley, so if you didn't see me, I probably left literature, dropped literature on your door. So, I am looking forward to the next session of the legislature. All summer long, I've been actually working, it's a, you know, we have a hundred day session, but I work year round, I've been going down to the legislature at least once a week, and I've been working with a, a committee, Criminal Justice Reform Committee, that is my signature issue in the state legislature. And we have been crafting bills, and those bills will be dropped very soon. And I think, uh, I think the stars are aligned now in Arizona for meaningful criminal justice reform. There's a lot of support, almost the entire Democratic Coalition supports it. And there's a lot of Republicans now that support it too, we brought a lot of energy to criminal justice reform. We have a number of outside groups, American Conservative Union, Forward U.S., Right on Crime, American Friends Service Committee, all these folks are well-funded, they have lobbyists, they have research departments, and they are gonna be working very intensively in the legislature this year to push criminal justice reform. The three areas that I'm looking at, and there's a lot to be done, not just three areas, but you have to start somewhere. Uh, we, I'd like to defelonize marijuana, right now Arizona is the only state in the United States that makes simple possession, personal possession of marijuana a felon, felony. So, we have a lot of people, a lot of young people in this county who've picked up marijuana charges, possession of marijuana charges, and they're stigmatized with felony convictions for the rest of their life. So, I'm trying to try to fix that, we're not gonna decriminalize it, that's not my plan. The plan is to reduce it from a felony to a misdemeanor, uh, with some kind of a penalty associated with that, some kind of a fine, community service, something like that, uh, for first and second offenders. The other area I'm very concerned about is school choice. Uh, I wanna congratulate Prescott Valley, you're in the Dewey-Humboldt School District, and you voted down the school bond, very good thing to do, in my opinion. Uh, I'm a strong school supporter, just last week, on Friday, I submitted my capstone project for my master's degree in education in teaching English as a second language, so I now have a little, I have a credential, or soon will have, as soon as the, we have the graduation ceremony, but I've completed all the requirements for my master's degree, it's something I've been studying for several years now. And, uh, I've learned a lot about public education, and, uh, I've learned that they, we have some very good schools up here, the schools in Prescott, Arizona, and Prescott Valley, our schools are better than in many other areas around the state. So, I wa, I don't wanna knock our public schools, because we do have some good schools up here, they could be better. I think charter schools, as a general rule, do better, they're more cost-effective, they get better results. And, uh, I'm a strong school's choice supporter, so I will expect to be pushing that, uh, agenda in the next legislature, and I think there's good, strong support for that, uh, in the legislature, particularly on the, on the Republican side. So, I think what you can look forward to seeing is more school choice, more parental choice, more education freedom for the citizens of Arizona. The third area that I'm gonna be looking at is taxes. We, the economy of Arizona has been doing so well, it's kicking off, uh, much higher revenues than were projected, than were anticipated. And when I say much higher revenues, we're talking about several hundred million dollars a year. This is a windfall to Arizona, how are we gonna spend that money? Well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of needs, one of the needs is education, I'm not against funding education, I'm gonna support funding for education, but there will be money left over to do other things, we're gonna look at infrastructure, particularly here in Yavapai County and rural areas, we need to pay more attention to our highways, to our roads. And then the third area is tax relief, I think you guys deserve a tax cut, and, uh, I'm gonna try to make sure you get one. So, those are gonna be my three priorities, uh, coming up, I'm looking forward to hearing from some of the council members on what they'd like us to be working on, uh, to represent Prescott Valley, represent Yavapai County, and, uh, and to represent you guys. Thank you very much.
Let's, uh, go to, uh, Representative Campbell next.
Well, thank you, Mayor, normally we would start with the President of the Senate, work down to us underlings down here, but, but, uh, I, I did offer Karen the mic, and she graciously said I should go ahead. Okay, folks, how are you, I'm Noel Campbell, I'm your state representative, uh, I'm starting my fifth year. I live in Prescott, uh, of course, I grew up in Arizona, um, had a wonderful life in this state, and, uh, grew up in Phoenix, and after years of that, decided I couldn't live down there any longer, and too hot, too many people. So, I came up here and, uh, got involved in politics, I'm retired, of course, and, uh, I worked in one area in the legislature of my four years, and I'm starting my fifth year, and that's in transportation. Two years ago, I was appointed the Transportation Chairman, uh, for the House, and so any highway bills, bridges, infrastructure will come through my committee, and I have the ability to push that legislation, or stop it, if it's bad legislation. I just want you to, to understand a couple of things quickly here, uh, and I'm gonna be happy to answer any questions you might have about anything, really, the deals of transportation, but, you, I'll just give you an example, you all know Highway 69 out here, you know what a, a mess it is, how it backlogs, it just, it's a nightmare to go from Prescott to Prescott, uh, Prescott Valley to Prescott, there's like 27 stoplights, it narrows to two lanes, opens up a little bit. It's symptomatic of Arizona, we're facing a real crisis in transportation, and I'll tell you why. We have not raised our fuel tax in Arizona since 1991. In 1991, 18 cents per gallon was what we paid, that's what we pay today. But in 1991, a dollar of tax revenue is only worth 47 cents today. So, we're losing every year the ability to maintain our roads and highways in this state, and I want you to understand that, and think about it, because there is no free lunch, it takes revenue to, to make our roads safe and efficient. And so, I'm dedicated to working on that, and I'll answer any specific questions as they come up, but that's my main focus. I'm also a military veteran, so I serve on the Veterans Committee, and I serve on the rural, they've created a new, um, committee this, this year, this session, dealing with rural issues, and I'm on that committee, because really rural Arizona, uh, it's quite large in the legislature, and we have our own special needs here in rural Arizona, and I'm happy to be on that. And so, with that, I'll pass this over to, to the President of the Senate.
We saved the best for last, Representative.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, thank you all for coming out tonight, this is great, that is the weather, you know, this night would not be this night without rain or snow. I, this is our eighth year, my eighth year, and I think we have had rain or snow every single night that this has occurred on. Do I, do you guys agree with that? Yeah, pretty much, so anyway, thanks everybody for coming out and battling this weather out here. Um, I am Karen Fan, I am serving as your senator, um, you graciously just re-elected me for my second term in the Senate. Most of you know me, for the few that don't, I moved here when I was four years old, I grew up here, so this is my home. Uh, I'm a owner of a construction company, that's what I do for real life, so I get my nails dirty, just like everybody else does. And, uh, but, uh, I've also somehow gotten involved with politics, and I did serve as the Vice Mayor of Prescott and Councilwoman for four years, and then I was a three-term mayor for Chino Valley. So, consequently, municipals, towns, cities, and counties are my love and my favorite thing, so I, I try and work very, very closely with all of our council members to make sure that we protect our state shared revenue, our, her funds, um, all the things that keeps government to the lowest level, which to me is really the way government should be, is closest to the people. Um, I've been very fortunate, I served six years over in the House, Chair of Transportation, Chair of Insurance on Finance, County Government, Ag and Water, I've always served on Ag and Water, 'cause I've worked with water issues up here for about 25 years now. Over in the Senate, I am, was Transportation, and again, Ag and Water, Finance, Insurance, and Propriations. And, uh, the day after our election day up here, we went down to Phoenix, and, uh, my caucus members, uh, elected me as the next Senate President. So, I will be leading the Senate for at least the next two years. My number one goal, and I've told everybody this, is, um, we're gonna have a little respect down there. I'm tired of the politics and the rhetoric and the everything else. You know, it's, it's okay to not always agree, it's okay to debate issues, but we must do that respectfully, we must, um, once in a while, just keep our mouths closed and our ears open, and let's hear what the other person has to say, and try and figure out how we're gonna solve that problem, we work for you, our job is to make sure that Arizona's a great state, and we have a great place to live, and good jobs, and good schools, and good highways, and that should be our number one focus, and the politics should be number two. So, um, I've told everybody, we had orientation, um, with all the new members Tuesday morning, it was both caucuses, new members together, and, and I said, you guys, most of you, we've all worked together over in the House, so this is not gonna be a surprise to you, but this is our number one goal around here, we're gonna have respect for each other, and we're gonna do things, so that's huge. I know you guys are gonna have a lot of questions, everybody is talking about what are the big agendas, I'll hit that real quick, just to get the, get the juices going here, uh, water, the drought contingency plan, you guys may have been hearing about that, uh, we call that DCP, we've gotta get that through so that we can pump up and keep our reserves in Lake Mead, so that there's enough water for Arizona for futures to come, so we are working on that. Uh, the school safety bill, we will be bringing that back, the Governor's Office told me that that was still at the top of his agenda, so we're gonna bring that back, and we're gonna start working through those issues again, to make sure that we have safe schools for our kids, and, um, it's a, that's a big issue, a really, really big issue. The budget, you guys were doing great, the economy is up, taxes are up, um, everybody's got jobs, it's just amazing. So, consequently, what happens when the economy's good, everybody's making money, they're all spending money, they're all paying taxes and everything else. And on this side, you know, all of the assistance programs that we usually have to spend money on, those are way down, so, because everybody's over here working, so we do have extra money to work with this year. Um, we need to be wise with it, we made a lot of promises that we need to keep with, uh, 20 by 20 with funding our education, so that is gonna be at the top of the agenda, is, you know, how do we make sure that those revenues are here, not just today and tomorrow, but five, 10, and 20 years from now, so that is a, a huge part of where our budget is gonna be. Um, we are also going to address the possibility of reducing our debt, because we do still owe on our buildings down there, so we're hoping we can make a little bigger dent in that, and, uh, pay off some of that credit card, uh, infrastructure, uh, juvenile justice, we're working on all those sorts of things, so those are the big issues. Now, the good thing is, we have extra money, the bad thing is, is when you have extra money, and I shouldn't, it's never extra, 'cause we'd never have enough, but everybody wants some, you know, it's easy, when your pockets are empty, and you can just say, "Sorry, kids, I don't have any money, so you can't go to the movies," but when it's there, and they know it's there, then everybody wants some, so I would love to see the session get done in a hundred days like it's supposed to, but I have a sneaking feeling it might last a little longer just because of those issues, so those are the highlights, and I'll turn it over to you guys to ask us what you want.
Councilmember Grossman, comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a few comments. First, let me start off with the good stuff. Representative Campbell, it was really nice to hear that you are in favor of a gas tax rather than, uh, the $32 fee that we're gonna be charged, uh, let everybody pay, especially the ones that use our roads and, uh, for transportation, uh, from out of state. So, I was really happy to hear that, and, uh, hopefully, we could still get that passed, even though there's gonna be the additional $32 fees, uh, for registration, uh, we still have a lot of roads that need to be repaired and, uh, and brought up to, uh, modern standards for, you know, the use that they have today. Regarding school and school safety, uh, I was sorry to hear, uh, Representative Stringer talk about the fact that our bond failed, and he was happy about that. Uh, the last several years, the, uh, state budget has, uh, reduced our capital projects fund by over 18 million. We were asking 15 million, 'cause we have schools that need major repairs, we have, we have schools that started the, the school year this year with no air conditioning, and I'm sorry, but when you start your school year in August, and you have no air conditioning for the school, it's not a good situation. We have buses that have over, have over 300,000 miles on them, and they're, you know, 20, 30 years old, uh, that's not right. We need, we need the state money now, in order to pay for that, 'cause right now, we're using money that could be used for better projects. Well, we have to bring, you know, we, we have great schools here, we have to bring the technology up, we need money for that too. And that's what that bond was gonna cover, none of that bond money was gonna come for, uh, salaries for any of the teachers or, uh, or staff or supervisors, it was all going to the, to the schools as needed. No. We'll give you a chance, I have more to say about you. And, uh, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just glad that some of the issues that you were talking about, Karen, were, uh, I mean, they're, they're positive, I mean, that's what this, this, that's what this area wants. Now, let me talk about the elephant in the room. Representative Stringer, back in June, there were statements that you made that went national, actually, they went international, okay? So, words that you said were, it was picked up on by every major news media. Then recently, you made some more comments that were picked up by the, uh, news media, and it went at least national, probably international again. It's at the point now where, when you go to speak before a group, or before a camera, or a radio station, whatever, okay? The minute people hear your name, the first thing that's gonna come to their mind is, here we go again, what's he gonna say now that's gonna be embarrassing? And by continuing to do that, and the people who don't think that, they're just gonna not listen, and just totally turn themselves off. Your effectiveness as a representative of this area is zero, in fact, it's minus zero, okay? Uh, we cannot have a representative saying the things you're saying, you can have those personal opinions, but the fact that you're a state representative, and you're supposed to represent all of the people, those comments are totally wrong, and they, they should not be said, especially in public. Uh, I think the best thing that you could do for this community, if you really do love this community, as you say you do, is to resign, and let someone else step in who's gonna be able to do the job and be effective.
Before we get the legislative comments, I'd like to work down to each of the council members. Laura Lee, or, you wanna take? Okay, let's, yeah, Laura's suggesting you respond now.
I, uh, I'm gonna make a very brief, uh, response, Marty, and, uh, you know, I've always respected you, I've always, uh, liked you, and thought you were a very, uh, counsel person with a lot of personal integrity, I've always felt that way about you. I know you're a Democrat, you've always opposed me politically. Well, you've always opposed me politically, I've certainly never had any support from you, so I have to factor that in, I have to factor that in to, uh, your, your comments here.
I am not a Democrat.
All right, well, good for you, uh, I didn't know that, I thought you had been, at one time, all right? And, I know you told me that you had been, at one time, so, uh, I factor in your, your political, uh, values in, in the comments that you've made. Um, I know there's a lot of controversy going on right now, uh, but I will say to you folks, when I decided to run for political office, and when I got elected to the state legislature, I didn't forfeit my First Amendment rights to free speech. I believe that, uh, everything I've said, uh, if you look at what I actually said, uh, is defensible, that it is truthful, that is factually accurate, that it can be supported by academic research. The problem that I have now, and that we all have right now, is that my statements have been misreported. There is a full audio transcript, a transcript of the audio, I should say, that's posted on my Facebook page, it's posted on my webpage, I believe it's posted on Prescott E-News, so anybody who wants to know exactly what I said can easily find out, and you don't have to rely on interpretations and, uh, quotes that have been excerpted out of context in newspaper reports. So, um, I have no intention of resigning, Marty, I was elected by the voters, not just of Prescott or Prescott Valley, but of the entire district, which stretches from Ashfork and Siligman, all the way down to North Anthem. I received about 67,000 votes, and there's not that many Republicans in LD1, so I must've got some votes from some people who were not Republicans, it wasn't just a Republican vote for me. Uh, I was the second highest vote getter in the state of Arizona for a House race. So, I am not going to disenfranchise the thousands and thousands of people who just returned me to office a month ago, November the 6th, returned me to office a month ago. I am not going to disenfranchise them by resigning my seat in the state legislature. So, Marty, we respectfully disagree, I will tell you that, in my view, and I think in the view of many of my colleagues, I've been a very effective legislator, I've been effective not only for the state, but I've been effective for Yavapai County in, um, supporting, uh, getting money for the county, uh, Noel has, has talked about this at great length, we actually got money for the mayor's school district, something very hard to do, we got money for the hotshots. So, we have brought home money for the, uh, for the, for the entire district, and particularly for Yavapai County. I think I'm going to be effective in doing that again. One of the reasons I'm going to be effective is because we have a split House, we have 31 Republicans and 29 Democrats. So, it takes 31 votes, we have 60 members in the legislature, it takes 60 votes to get something accomplished. I am part of 31, uh, coalition, uh, that is, uh, made up of 31 votes, so I am a 31st vote for the Governor's Agenda, for the Agenda of the Leadership of the House of Representatives. Every legislature, every legislator in the State House of Representatives is going to be consequential, and for that reason, I think I'm going to be, I will be able to continue to be an effective legislator for my district. So, I, again, have no intentions of resigning, uh, I do plan to accept the, um, the criticism, if you will, uh, as gracefully and as, with as much humility as I can, and that's one of the reasons I have not issued a formal statement at this point. Uh, I may issue a statement at some point, but right now, I am not issuing a formal statement to the media, but I wanted to share that with you, because we're here tonight, and we've had the comment that we've had. Uh, I think I need to let my constituents know that I feel strong, and that I have no intention of resigning, thank you.
Laura Lee?
I wanna thank you, Senate President Fan, uh, you shared with us, you know, what you expect to take place, and you sorta did my checklist, so, rather than repeat that, I do wanna say I have one major concern. I have the privilege of chairing two major water groups in northern Arizona, and I'm very concerned about misinformation and disinformation that's out there. And, uh, while it may not be the responsibility of our two Houses, I, I would like them to make sure, when they act on water issues, they are positive, that they have true, verified, scientific facts, I'm really concerned about that, Madam President, because right here in our own area, there are a lot of people frightened and concerned because they have been presented misinformation, so that's one of my major concerns. I was totally unprepared to, um, have this, um, this type of a meeting here tonight. Representative Stringer, I wanna honor your right for freedom of speech. I don't ever wanna live anywhere where that's not allowed. Unfortunately, I, I can't agree with many of your, your statements. I was stunned. I was stunned when you said it was a good thing that the bond issue was turned down here. I'm worried about the buses. I'm worried about the buildings. I'm not going to tick off the whole list. Those are more important to me than politics. My children in this community. Sir, with all due respect, please think before you speak.
Mallory.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to thank all of you for coming tonight because it's wonderful to see our chambers filled with the community. You need to be involved. We love having you here. Thank you. And it's a wonderful night to be here because you have the opportunity to meet your state representatives and our brand new state senator. And we so appreciate you, Karen. And so just to touch on a few things, you know, I was just in a meeting the other day with Noel and he's a fighter for transportation. He's really out there. And what I'd like to ask is all of us stay on top of the funding for transportation. We are all driving in our roads around town. We see what's happening. It's real. It's right in front of us. And these legislatures need our support to get this funding. So please be aggressive with what we need and know the funding that we need to keep our roads in order. We have fallen behind in the last 10 years and it takes all of us to get things accomplished. It takes all of us. And so that's why it's so important to have all of you here tonight. So thank you. Thank you, Noel, for going out there and fighting that fight and being on the front lines. I know, Karen, you've been out there too. In regards to the schools, I personally do not have any children or grandchildren that live in this state. But you know what? I have grandchildren that live in another state. And those people support and help my grandchildren get an education. It is my duty, and I feel it is all of our duties, to take care of our children. They are our future. We have to have a good future. You need to invest in our children. They need to have the good education. We need to move forward with this. You know, we need to be a part of this. We are the community. And so I would ask going forward that as the legislation moves forward, you have some extra money or those things that happen down there. I realize a lot of things go on, but I do ask of you to help to make sure that our future, our children, are going to have the education that they need because someday it'll be the generation sitting up here. And we need to make sure it works well. This is an amazing country and it has been fought for by many and it has been died for by many. And that sits a lot in my heart, always. If anybody knows me, you know I'm all about first responders. I'm all about the military. And so with that, I too, Representative Stringer, would ask that you go forward and do caution your speech. And you do have freedom of speech. And so do I. But you know what? When I sit up here, it's not just me. This isn't even about me. I represent them. And that's who I got to think about when I'm talking. And I don't forget all those soldiers and all those other presidents long before I was even thought of that have fought the rights for today. Today, in this room, we have the rights that were fought and died for by so many over 200 years ago. That cannot be taken away, not today, not ever. Now it is our fight. It is our fight going forward to keep those rights for everyone. This country is for the betterment of all. And that can't never change. So thank you. I appreciate you guys coming here tonight. And with all due respect, like you said, Karen, we won't always agree and not everything works for everybody and you surely can't make everybody happy. But you know what? We do need to respect each other and we need to come to a solution that is for the best for this whole state. That's what we need. And I thank you again.
Waiting.
I'm going to keep my remarks brief. I know we have an agenda and we do have some of our staff that'll be making presentations after our few words. One thing that appeals to me is water. The issue, I think it is number one in the state, is number one here in Prescott Valley. And one thing I don't think our residents understand or have the full story, and it's a very confusing kind of process in terms of how much water each community has and how that water is approved. And I know focusing on some of the larger resources in the state is going to be beneficial to us, but I think anything that legislators can do to simplify how that process works and how we work with the legislature, we work with developers here and how that process works, because I think there's a lot of confusion. And I know there's a lot of people here tonight, residents, who look at our 2025 general plan and, you know, that addresses water and addresses the other issue I think is important to us and that's streets. And, you know, I think something that we support, at least I do, is the raise of the gas tax simply to help us put our roads in a better condition. We're kind of in a five-year plan right now because that's all the funds or resources we have available. And if other resources in the state are available through HERF that will increase our resources here to improve our streets, I would recommend that you seriously consider that. And then education, of course, is a priority. That's something that I was disappointed about and I know all of us were relative to the fact it did not pass. And again, just like water, it's education. You know, I think it's a fundamental need in our community and we recognize seniors every month here and it's just unbelievable, the strides they've taken compared to when I was going to high school and we want to make sure that continues. And school funding, you know, in terms of safety is important as well. I think we want to keep our students safe and I know that Humboldt Unified School District is working on that very hard. And they were looking at, you know, I think upgrading our facilities and buses and hopefully with the help of the state legislature in terms of some of those extra dollars. I think the state is watching relative to how you handle funding for education. I know we will be, so we're counting on your help.
Doty.
Thank you, Mayor. Senate President, congratulations. I've seen you work over time and I'm so very proud of the work that you have achieved here. You have the ability to bring people to the table, to get things done. Not everyone has that. I know that you'll continue to do that and I look for great things out of you. And I'm so proud to serve alongside you as a councilwoman. Thank you so much for everything that you have already done and that you continue to do. Representative Campbell, I thank you for working on transportation. It is something, as my career, is very important to me and you have worked hard. You've got off your duff and you put your hands to the grindstone. You are a workhorse and I want you to know I appreciate that. We have needs and we have values here in Prescott Valley. We have a region that we live in and we have a wonderful state. Transportation is my passion, but education, excuse me, transportation is my career, but it's education that's my passion. And I know a lot of you have education as your passion too. I've heard from another council member and I've heard from people here who I've sat with you directly. And when I hear Representative Stringer talk about that he's happy that the school bond did not pass, I have a problem with that. Several of us here worked hard on trying to get security and safety for our schools, our children. How much more precious is our children? We need technology. We need our facilities to be in good shape so that we can send our precious children to these schools and to be, help them to be ready to learn. We need buses to get them there. We have more work to do. When I saw this past year, what was happening in education, that was really important to me. I don't believe as a councilwoman that Representative Stringer has done the effort and the due diligence on education the way it could have been done. As a councilwoman, I represent you all here too. We have needs and we have to work on those. We need roofs. We need buses. We need pay for our teachers. There's more to do. And for our support staff. And we have values. We like to sit outside and talk to our neighbors and wave hello across the street. And just as Councilmember Mallory said, there are people that fought for us. My grandfather fought at the Battle of the Bulge to fight oppression. When I hear of people, no matter who it is, who make racially charged comments about people that are different from themselves and believes that it's defensible and truthful and accurate, I have a problem with that. And I work hardly, I work hard with people shoulder to shoulder to try to make our communities better. I try to represent as best I can and listen to people and work alongside them. And when I hear of people trying to put down other people through these racially charged remarks, I'm not okay with that. Racially charged comments will not be tolerated, period. We have values and as my grandfather fought and died at the Battle of the Bulge facing oppression from Nazi Germany, I too will fight when people come, whoever that is, to bring racially charged comments and to try to make others who are different from ourselves be put down. And we know that that leads to other things. If we don't stand up as good people and fight that, then there goes us. This week, I had the opportunity to see people stand up and fight against that and I'm willing to do that. Just as Councilmember Grossman said, he called for resignation of Representative Stringer, I make that call as well because I don't believe, I don't believe you represent this area as you should. I believe that you have other intentions. I believe that you're missing the mark on the education. I believe that when you single out ethnicities, there's something in your heart that is not right. And we try to help each other as neighbors and friends. As a councilwoman, I call for that.
Campbell.
Yes. I'm one of the veterans who did fight for this country. I served a year in Vietnam in 1968. And it really bothers me when people talk like this and have never read the transcript. I encourage every one of you to read the transcript and find out for yourself what's in Representative Stringer's heart. That's what you should do because we all know the press sensationalizes everything. So take a look at it. I know David Stringer. He is no racist. Sometimes his mouth gets away from him, you know? That's not a bad thing at all times. And for, to listen to the fact that he doesn't represent because of what he says, well, 67,000 people voted for him and he must represent something. And I'm not here to defend what Representative Stringer says, but I sure as hell I'm here to defend his right to say it and not be ostracized about it. That offends me as an American. It really does. And think about it. This country needs plain talk. It may be hard to hear. It may be hurtful, but that's what this country's about. And that's why I fought for it. And we should never let a representative be railroaded out of this community. Only the voters can do that. Not the city council, not somebody's opinion. That's what our democracy is all about. Now I know what he said was racially insensitive, but it's not racist in my opinion. But that's not for me to say. The voters who elected him knew about what he said and he said it and he was overwhelmingly elected. Does that mean the 67,000 people who voted for him are racist? I think not. I think not. So I do stand up for his right to say something and face the criticism and face the music. That's why you're all here, most of you. And not to expand too much, but I just want to get on to another quick issue here about education. We gave the teachers a 20% pay raise. Twenty, yes, we did. You can shake your head all you want, but over three years, you're getting a 20% pay raise increase. And we do not set, excuse me, excuse me. The legislature does not set teacher salaries. Your school presidents, school board presidents do that, but we provided the money. Now maybe it's not enough, but let's have some, let's have some honest talk here about education. All we ever hear about education is the need for more money, but we never hear about, talk about results. Results? How is it that we can graduate 85% of our students and they only pass the AZ merit test at 35 and 30% ratios? They're not ready for college, you know? So we, we can talk about education, but you have to talk about both sides of it and we work hard for that. And I'm proud that I was able to vote for a 20% pay raise over the next three years and maybe we'll get some more money in there. My God, I get fired up. I'm sorry. I apologize to you, really.
Campbell, or Karen, I should say, Fan? You're up, Karen.
Was there a question or?
Well, it's up to you. You're, you got the microphone.
I was hoping the council members might have some questions of us as to what you see in the legislative body and what are your priorities so that we know we can fight for you guys.
We do have some questions coming up.
Okay, good.
Let's go forward on our agenda.
I would like to hear those questions, please.
Okay, let's move on to staff discussion. State shared revenues. Okay, let's move on to, uh, staff discussion, state shared revenues. Katie Pell, our accounting manager.
Good evening. My name's Katie Pell. I'm the Management Services Director. Tonight, I'll keep my comments brief on state shared revenues. As you all know, state shared revenues are a large portion of the town's budget along with our local transaction privileged tax revenues. And we just want to thank you tonight, Senate President Fan, for all of your efforts in ensuring whenever there's changes made to those state shared revenues or our transaction privileged tax base, that you really consider our rural community, along with all the rural communities. And we've noticed that, we appreciate that, and we just ask that you continue in your efforts in that regard. With that, thank you.
Senator Fan, you do want to answer to that?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
It's an easy one for me.
Either one of you, Stringer or Campbell? Okay. How about anything else, Karen, Katie?
Mr. Mayor, if I could. Karen, really, or Senator Fan, President of the Senate Fan, we've known each other for a couple of decades and you have been very forthright and honest in your defense of local government during those years. Not always do we agree, but thank you very much for protecting state shared revenues. It is the, the, the milk and, and bread of communities, as you well know, being the former mayor of Chino Valley. We thank you for that and we look forward to your continued defense of local government.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, let's go into distracted driving. Chief Gerald, there he is.
Good evening, members of council and the Arizona Legislature. Thanks for coming tonight. I've been asked to provide an overview of our new ordinance on the banning of the use of mobile communication devices while driving. Our ordinance closely resembles the laws recently put into place by the county, City Prescott and Chino Valley. So our, our ordinance defines a mobile communication device as any wireless communication device or portable electronic instrument that's designed to engage in calls and/or receive, transmit text, images, data, and includes without limitation, mobile telephones, personal digital assistants, laptops, tablets, computers, pagers, I'm not sure who uses pagers anymore, electronic games and computing devices. These instruments, instruments must all be used in hands-free mode. Our ordinance will take effect, I hope, January 19th. And we will be issuing warnings from January 19th until the end of February. So it's going to be about a six-week timeframe for us to issue warnings. But beginning March 1st, we will be enforcing it. And it is a primary offense, so that means my officers can stop you just for the use of, if they see you on your phone. First offense is $100, second offense is $2,500, or up to, I'm sorry, up to $2,500. And there are exceptions, like if you have to call in an emergency or call in a drunk driver or something like that. So why did we do this? I think everyone knows how dangerous the practice is, but I want to share a couple of things with you. You know, there's 317 million people in the United States and 328 million cell phones in use today. Think about that for a minute. National Highway Traffic Safety Administration reports that approximately 23% of all accidents are caused by cellphone use. But the National Safety Council says distracted driving crashes are underreported and they estimate the cellphone use alone accounts for 27% of all accidents. Researchers from the University of Utah found that distractions caused by cellphone use are similar to driving with a blood alcohol content of .08, or the legal limit for drunk driving. And according to a study by State Farm and Children's Hospital Philadelphia, distracted driving is the number one killer of teens in America, and that should make us take notice. Every 26 seconds, a crash occurs and 16 people die every day in the U.S. because of distracted driving. You're five times more likely to get into an accident while talking on a cellphone and 23 times greater if you're texting, which makes sense because if you're texting, reading, or sending a message, you're taking your eyes off the road for about five seconds, long enough to cover a football field while driving at 55 miles per hour. DPS reported that in 2017 marked the third straight year of increases in traffic fatalities in the state of Arizona. 2017 also saw more people killed in traffic crashes since 2007. Here in Prescott Valley, we've had at least two incidents recently where fatalities occurred due to distracted driving. Municipalities around the state are enacting distracted driving laws, but we need the support of the, to pass this at a statewide level. I know that Senator Fan has been involved in this and we appreciate that, but we ask your support in the upcoming legislative session to get meaningful laws passed. We really need to get this done. Thank you.
We'll call on you when we're ready. President Fan?
I thought they handed me the mic, it was okay to ask a question?
President Fan, I, I want to thank you. It was mentioned by our chief at all the times you've tried to address this arena of issues. Don't you do it either, Mayor?
She's on her own, look at her.
I didn't have a lot of questions before because I knew these items were coming up. I still don't have a question because Senator Fan, President Fan, I know how you feel about this. I am so proud of Yavapai County and we, we hope we will lead the way. I have a concern though. How are the citizens here in Yavapai County going to know where, you know, this is legal, where it's not? So, based on that, go back and please make it statewide. And I know how hard you've tried, but I'm hoping that gentlemen will also join this fight because I think we'll create a little bit of confusion and chaos if we don't have a state law.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. Mayor?
By all means.
Vice Mayor Lauralee, you know, I, you know that this has been a big issue. It took me five years, I ran it five years, every year, until we got it passed with the no texting for our teenage drivers, our Class G drivers. It was something I was committed to and year after year, it got voted down and voted down. And finally, last year, we were able to pass that, so that was a huge step. We are still, have been getting some pushback on it statewide, but I think we're making some end roads there, thanks to you and Prescott and Yavapai County. I believe you guys were what, the 18th or 19th municipality now that has passed their own, uh, no, no handheld devices sort of thing, if I remember? So we are at that point in exactly what you said, Vice Mayor. How are the citizens going to know from one county, one city line or whatever? So this is now a statewide concern because we cannot have 91 cities and towns with different laws plus 15 other counties. So it is time for our legislative body to step up as a statewide concern and pass one blanket one that will cover and supersede everybody else so the drivers all know what the rules are everywhere.
And Karen, I think that law done on the underage driver, the youthful drivers, teenage drivers, that was passed in the first year, I believe, of the 53rd legislature, if my memory serves and I remember, you're bringing that, bringing that bill and thinking that you had a very substantial win on that bill and it turned out that you actually needed my vote to pass it, which you got. So I was happy to support it. My question was of the presenter on the fines. I believe you said the first offense was $100.
That's our, our code, not.
I'm sorry?
It's our code, our town.
Yes, yes, your first, the first offense here was $100. What was the second?
The second subsequent offenses is up to $2,500 and that's the discretion of the magistrate or judge.
Yeah, quite frankly, that seems to be very high. I don't know if I could support anything that high at the state level, but I think I could support some kind of a statewide, some kind of a statewide ban with some kind of a civil penalty attached to it. But I have to say, Karen makes a very good point. We can't have, you know, dozens and dozens of different laws and different municipalities across the state. So we need a uniform standard because I'm afraid if we don't have a uniform standard, the courts are going to knock it out. Because you know, as you drive down the highway, you can be going through, you know, many different jurisdictions and it's very unfair to the driver that it's, you know, it's a $100 fine here and it's a $200 fine there. And, you know, we can't have different, different rules as you move around the state of Arizona. So I think we do need a uniform standard. I will probably support some version of what you are doing. I don't know about the $2,500.
Well, I agree with you and I think, like I said, this isn't just, you know, we can look around and say, oh, this happens in Seligman or something or up on I-40. We've had several incidents right here in Prescott Valley. One, and both, well, one was the asphalt driver who was killed and the other person was just riding their little motor scooter on the side of the road and got hit by a car who, who was texting. So this is an event or an occurrence that's going on right here locally. It affects everybody. And so I think a lot of municipalities around the state have just gotten tired of waiting for the state to do something and they're starting to enact their own. I couldn't agree with you more. We would love to see it on a statewide basis. It makes it easier for everybody. But in the absence of that, we've had to do something, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Okay, let's move to the next item, I-17 expansion. Norman Davis, are you up?
Good evening, Mayor Scoob, Prescott Valley Council, Senate President Fan, Representative Campbell, Representative Stringer. Did want to talk to you tonight, a couple of transportation. I have two issues I'd like to, they're similar, but we can take each one individually.
You can take, you can take them both if you want.
Okay, we'll do that too, Mayor, if that's what you desire. For the audience's benefit, Norm Davis, I'm the Town and Prescott Valley Public Works Director. I deal with transportation, but I know the representatives and Senate President Fan very well. We've worked on these issues a long time. I know we, Senator Fan, Representative Stringer, we saw each other at, Stringer, I'm sorry, Representative Campbell, we saw each other at the Rural Transportation Conference a month ago. Talked of rural transportation in great need. Let's talk about I-17. It's grown over the many years, been in place. Northern Arizona, it's the lifeblood to the valley and our transportation. I'd just like to hear your comments tonight about the reliability, it's shutting down. I know we've done lots as transportation professionals that we want to see funding put in place. I know there's been design put into place by Arizona Department of Transportation, but just like to hear your comments and of course, keep it at the forefront for funding. As the mayor requested, her funding, you've, know it well, each of you served as transportation chairs, you know the need out there. I do understand, you know, the education is a priority. I was glad to hear that if there is some fund balance, revenues are good, that we can look at, maybe funding some transportation projects with these one-time revenues we have, maybe we can get some infrastructure improvements with these one-time revenues. And that's worked very well in the past when we've had fund balance and a very robust years. So with that, be happy to hear your comments about Interstate 17 and of course, her funding.
Well, right now, because of the funding crisis that we have, we're not even able to maintain our state roads. We're at about 47%. And it's critical. It's, it's flatlined out, but it's going to drop. I mean, we're going to go into a real crisis here if we don't get some revenue into this system. And what do I mean by revenue? I mean, I mean a billion dollars. I mean a billion dollars. You say, well, how, how would a billion dollars, where would we get that? Take a quarter out of your pocket and hold that quarter up and look at it. A quarter today won't buy you a checklet. Might buy you a little piece of candy, maybe. But a quarter added on to our existing tax that we have would give us over a billion dollars that we could immediately flood into this state. Now, listen, nobody likes taxes. I'm a conservative Republican, but the government has to do three essential things. Public education, public safety, and transportation. And everything else is just nice to have, but that's what the government was instituted for. Think about it. After the first congressional congress, the postal roads were created because that congress realized that for every bit of money they put into transportation would pay an economic benefit. And so for every dollar we put into transportation and infrastructure, will return us a $3 economic return. I am dedicated to getting funds into this system. I know maybe the governor won't support it and maybe the people won't support it. But if we don't do something and quickly, we're going to pay the price and we already see it on the I-17. That is the most dangerous stretch of highway in Arizona. One accident will close it for 12, 14 hours sometimes. And, and we need to flood the interstates that need money, we need to get that to them. And I'm, I'm all ears. You got a better way to do it, you come and talk to me. You tell me how to do it. But think about this. The way to do it is take a quarter out of your pocket and for, put it for a gallon of gasoline. That will give us the money we need to get started on these roads and highways and bridges, especially the I-17. Maybe I'm preaching to people that don't want to hear what I'm going to say, but I didn't get elected to sit on my duff and not do something and try to make this state better in transportation areas. Now, we passed a bill. We passed a bill to get the Highway Patrol out of the HERF funding. I don't know if you folks know much about this, but they were taking our highway fund and sweeping money out of it, up to $120 million in some years to pay for the Highway Patrol. And so last year, we created a bill to separately fund the Highway Patrol and keep it out of the HERF. So now the HERF is not going to be used to fund the Highway Patrol. We're going to collect that revenue through ADOT, a fee when you register your vehicle. And I know the pain it's going to cause, but think about this, we're on the first step to improving the money flow for our highways, plus we get additional Highway Patrol officers out of that fee, which is so important. And we can use it, the fee can be used to modernize the infrastructure procedures that we're going to use in this state. I don't know if it's going to happen. I don't know if it's going to happen. All I know is that when I'm down there, I'm going to work as hard as I can to make it happen. And I wish, I wish and pray to God that the governor would lead us on this. I can't do this by myself. But, you know, you, you have eyes, you see, you see Highway 69, you see the I-17, you see the congestion and the, and the problems that we have. I hope I don't sound like a preacher, really. I don't mean to.
Do a good job there, Noel. Karen?
Yes, Mayor. And Norm knows this, maybe not everybody in the audience knows, we, we do have an interim project, why we try and figure out how we're going to pay for the big picture, if you will, but we do have an interim project going on, as you know, between Black Canyon City and Sunset Point. There will be some center traverse lanes that will help us alleviate if there's an accident or weekend or holiday backup traffic, that we will be able to have some extra transverse lanes in the middle to help us get through that. It is a Band-Aid and it will be a little help because that's always a real tough part of the section. Is it, is that five miles, is that, or three miles? How many is that, Norm?
I think it's a little more than that, than five.
Yeah, okay. So, so it will help a lot and, and we will try. I, I travel that road pretty much every week, so I make sure I have lots of water and a blanket and everything else with me and snacks because at any given time, I know I can be stuck for hours on end, so we totally understand that. But we'll get that done and Noel is right, Representative Campbell is correct. We need more funding if we're going to pay for these new lane miles.
Yeah, I, I agree actually with what my colleagues have said. I believe it was in March of this year, there was, ADOT had a conference down in Black Canyon City and explained the new project that they're working on. It's in two phases. It goes from Sunset Point, I think, to Black Canyon City, and then there's another phase from Anthem up to Black Canyon City. And my understanding is that this is a go, that much of the funding is already available. In 2016, I actually campaigned on a fix to, to I-17, as long as it was not a toll road. And I'm assured that it will not be a toll road. The money's available. Toll road really will not work because of the, the way the traffic flows and the peaks and the valleys on the weekends and so on like that. So a toll road is not really practical, I'm told, on I-17, and that's not part of the, not part of the plan. I was in the lodging industry here in Prescott for a long period of time, so, you know, I had, I had people coming in on Friday nights at 8:30, 9 o'clock and say, you know, I just spent five hours on, on I-17. So I understand the critical importance of fixing I-17. My understanding is a fix is in the works and by around 2021, I mean, the work is going to start, I think within the next year or so, but that by 2021, we'll see some meaningful relief with extra lanes on I-17. So something I very strongly support and I think it'll be a great benefit to our community.
You have a comment?
I, I do, I have a question. I promised you I'd have questions. I wanted to share with everybody here today that I started my morning in Flagstaff. I drove from here. And so I depended on what milepost I was, whether I was having rain, sleet, snow. So you add that to the lack of sand. So you add that to the lack of sanity on the way of the drivers who were speeding past me, they had to be doing 80 or 90 miles an hour. So that sets up the scenario to explain my question. Would there be any benefit for us funding more Highway Patrolmen to prevent all that excessive speed? That won't, that won't help with, you know, the overutilization. But I actually was pulling way over to the side because these drivers were frightening me. Now, I have a lead foot, so my friends tell me. See? So if I was intimidated, so I really, I'm asking a serious question. We don't have the dollars to do what we need to do. Therefore, we probably don't have the diars, dollars to hire additional Highway Patrolmen. But if we had just a little bit more control on there, would it help?
Karen?
Um, you know, it, it, of course, it always helps. We know that, uh, you know, when we do reduce the speed, and if you notice, when you come up and down I-17 on holiday weekends, right? Um, they do have reduced speeds because they do understand that as more traffic is there, uh, the, the more frequency for accidents and the slightest little, you know, you don't have that buffer, you know, like you would if you've got a couple of car lengths between everybody. So the slightest little thing like the no texting, or the, you know, the unattention will cause those accidents. So if you do slow those speeds down, then yes, that increases your, um, um, response time. I was going to say correction time, but response time is, so that is correct.
But there's no enforcement of those signs.
And that, well, it, there is, if there's a police officer there, but you are correct, Vice Mayor. Uh, unfortunately, we are, all have lead foots, and we all are trying to get somewhere in a hurry, and hopefully we do it safely. The truth is, is that, um, we have a lot of DPS positions that are unfilled right now, partially because we don't have the monies to, uh, hire them. We are getting better with the new revenues coming in, uh, but we have another bigger problem, too, is many of our DPS officers, um, the, across the state have not had any raises in many, many, many years. And quite honestly, there's a lot of them that don't want that job anymore because, uh, the pay just isn't that good. So that is something that's on the agenda this year, um, is to look at pay increases across the state for DPS and for our correction officers, um, so that we can get some qualified people in there. They're all qualified, we just need more of them, that's all.
Thank you.[1505.87][1505.87](APPLAUSE).
Anything else, Norm?
I don't, Mayor, thank you.
Air fund, you covered everything? Thank you. Any other comments, council? Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to make a comment. I know during Thanksgiving, I think during that holiday, they did station, uh, the Highway Patrol, I think it was every five miles on I-17 between Flag and, and, uh, Phoenix, and, you know, thinking outside the box, uh, like Councilwoman Nia is saying, you know, it may not expend, or it may have an impact on resources, but those kinds of things, I think, do help, and it, it may give those folks who were traveling during that time to think about, uh, speed and other things. So hopefully, we'll see other programs like that.
Yeah, I forgot to mention, I saw no officers, none.[1553.75][1553.75](LAUGHTER).
Good. Any other comments? Mary?
I was just going to say, too, that I've noticed that you do have a lot more of those signs that, you know, kind of flash at us at what our speed is. And I will say that I believe those help tremendously. So, um, appreciate all of those that are going up. I see more and more of them, and they are really a help. They really do say, hey, slow down there. So, and even the words, I don't know, just not only numbers, but words come up and say, slow down. So I think that's good.
Good. Any other comments? Laura?
I just want to thank all three of you. And we know why most of you are here, but I am excited that you're here, because we normally have hardly anyone here.[1606.83][1606.83](LAUGHTER). And I'm so excited to have all of you here. Thank you, all three.
I want to thank you also, and I, I realize you, it's kind of a tough job being a legislator. Uh, you have to handle the matters of the state. Once in a while, some legislator gets excited and wants to micro, micromanage the cities and towns. I think back on what they call Bill Number 1487, I believe it was, which in my mind was an idiot bill, but it, it can happen. Council people aren't the only ones that make mistakes. Um, well, uh, Vice Mayor would dispute that.[1647.33][1647.33](LAUGHTER).
Oh, I would agree.
Karen, and I'd like to compliment you on something. I've, I've known you for many years, you've run for office many, many times. I have never heard you say one negative comment about an opponent. Unfortunately, this last election, so, so our two senator candidates were calling each other liars, and I heard, I heard other comments from local candidates. And that kind of idiot stuff, I wish, I wish they'd learn to be respectable. You've, you've, to your credit, you've been just a, an outstanding candidate, and that's probably why you're, you keep getting reelected.[1684.04][1684.04](APPLAUSE). So I want to thank you all. I appreciate your, uh, hearing us, and I appreciate that we were, we're able to have these meetings. Keep up the good work. Council, have any other comments? Laura has another comment.
Your meeting is coming up. When we adjourn this meeting, it isn't over.
Yeah, we'll, uh, then we'll have another meeting immediately thereafter, but thank you so much. We really appreciate that. I noticed Stringer has to be out by 6:30. I think you're going to be about 10 minutes late, but, uh, you can cope with that. And, and Noel and Karen, thank you so much.
Our doors are always open to you, and of course, everybody else, some of you have come and hung out with us, so our doors are always open if you ever want to come down and, and talk to us a bit, so that's what your issue is.
Okay, we should add that on the microphone. I hope everybody heard that.
Sorry.[1743.75][1743.75](LAUGHTER).
And the microphone was right in front of her, so she didn't use it.[1746.54][1746.54](LAUGHTER).
All right, Mayor, I will say this. Our doors are always, always open. We are here to serve you, so anytime, if you would like to come down and hang out with us, um, come talk to us, we're here for you. And if you're coming down there isn't, is, isn't possible, let us know, and we'll try and get the schedule so we can meet with you guys up here, okay? I'm really good at copies.
Okay, you're real good at coffee. Okay, with that, uh, we're, we're going to adjourn, we're going to recess for just long enough so that Fatima can, uh, get her, uh, town clerk thing set up, and then we'll